Regular, this is normal on this activity. School committee meeting of Monday, October 5th. If I could ask you all to rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we are going to begin with the school committee member and student reports, beginning with the chair report. Last week, I sent an order to the city council requesting $700,000 transfer from our free cash that was certified just a few weeks ago to cover net school spending. So it'll be a transfer from available funds to schools. So what will happen is tomorrow at the school, sorry, the city council meeting, likely the order will be referred to finance meeting the following Tuesday. They will vote on it and then it'll be forwarded to the regular city council meeting the following Tuesday for their vote. So we'll know in about two weeks and one day about that particular appropriation. We've calculated that that should cover most of the net school spending, but we're not 100% sure. So obviously, every year, we need to look at the calculations, but we believe that it's fairly close. And this has certainly been a goal of my office, my, I think, the city council and the school committee to reach this number. So we're very excited that that will likely move forward. So moving on to the resource committee.
He isn't here, so we're just going to echo what you said about the net, we had some updates on the net school spending and we had some action items for, we have some action items tonight on our school choice funds. Bob will further give us, give us more information on the net school spending later on, or I don't know if you do it now.
Actually, I think the mayor just succinctly summarized.
Okay, all right. I didn't know if there was anything more to add to it because it changes so often. And so that would be it for resource.
Thank you. Paulsey?
We have a meeting tomorrow at 5:00 at South Street.
And student support.
We just had a really exciting meeting about opportunities to expand involvement with FATV and television and video production. As it's happening at the high school, the plan is to really look at the middle school level as well. And we're going to be investigating some exciting opportunities there. So, you know, we'll, we'll keep people updated as that develops. I don't think we'll talk about it yet because we're still kind of working on what that might look like. Everybody is welcome to come to those meetings. And then we had an update about the parent survey that the district is working on that will be rolled out at some point this half of the year, right? I guess before the, yeah. And there's going to be a lot of opportunity for parents to weigh in about the experience that they and their child are having at their schools. And that's going to become really useful data for us at this level, but I think at the school level especially, to really help tailor programs and help meet the needs of all kids. So we're very excited about that. And we'll be following up at a later meeting about average class sizes in the district and looking at, you know, whether we're meeting some of our goals there.
Great. Questions or comments on that?
Just a quickie thing to add. I talked briefly about, about this in the meeting, but I would just as soon say it to everyone, which is, I'm really excited to announce that we are doing an after-school program at Rheingold School. And this is part of our, we had our, our educational gala last spring to kind of direct funding and raise money for after-school programs, but we do have some great volunteers. So volunteering is going to be Matthew Puma, who is the ally coach over at Rheingold, and I will be helping. And Peter Cap Dagley of the Boulder Art Gallery will do a presentation about the Boulder. This is going to be an after-school program called Fascinating Fitchburg. And it runs October 15th, 22nd, 29th, November 12th and 19th from 3:00 to 4:00 o'clock at Rheingold. Open to 3rd and 4th graders. It's going to be so dynamic. We are going to have all kinds of historical items that come from different collections. We are going to have the kids doing research about Fitchburg. We're going to carry on what we've been doing for local history that started last year in the elementary grade. So Rheingold parents, please be on the lookout for this flyer that will be coming home. And we're also planning a roll stone hike, which will be on a Saturday, and we'll try to get that information out as, as much as we can. And again, that would be families bringing the kids. Not a school-sponsored hike, but we want to encourage kids to go hike roll stone because it's got unique granite with a mineral called, what, apology, Quinto?
Shorl. It's black tourmaline.
A black tourmaline, which is right here in Fitchburg. It is our gemstone. So really great to have that onboard and more to come as the program unfolds.
Great. School personnel committee, we are actually going to go into executive session today, but it'll be at the end, not at the beginning. And last but not least, our student reports. Sabrina?
Yay. So September 24th, we had the senior reception, and I heard it was lots of fun. I didn't get to go, but there were lots of students and teachers and food, which is important. Last Friday, the football team won their game against Shrewsbury.
Woo-hoo.
Yay. Next Sunday, 20 students are attending the officer training seminar, and they're going to learn how to collaborate with their clubs and groups and learn how to lead, and that's at Nichols College. Next, next Friday is the homecoming game at 7:00, and I hope to see lots of you there. And then the following day is the homecoming dance.
Great.
Oh, and I've got something to add to your high school report, which is Twin City Paws will bring therapy animals tomorrow to the high school at lunch.
Yay.
So tell everyone you know and Facebook in and text it and the rest of it. And I'm sure Mr. Roche will be making that announcement. So for the four lunch periods, we will have therapy animals at the cafeteria. Come visit.
It's always an exciting day.
Isn't it?
Yeah. Yep.
All right. Moving on to the approval of the meeting minutes from August 26th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Any questions, comments, revisions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Now moving on to any business or communications.
Meeting for the gala. So our gala was so good, we're going to do it again. And we're having a first meeting about it, October 8th at 4:00 at the superintendent's office, that is 376 South Street, South Street School. Parents, students, whatever, we need all hands on deck to have a gala as wonderful as the one we had last year. So please come. We will keep you informed as to how this unfolds, and we look forward to seeing you there.
Great. Also, this is the question that everyone's been asking me for, for weeks. You ready?
Yeah.
We're setting Halloween trick-or-treating hours.
Okay.
Every year, this is, okay. So it will be on Saturday, October 31st, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So that is the official citywide trick-or-treating hours. There is also that day, a noon to 2:00 p.m. trick-or-treating on Main Street sponsored by the CDC and a whole bunch of businesses on Main Street. So two trick-or-treating times on October 31st, noon to 2:00 on Main Street, and then 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. citywide. Also, today is our World Habitat Day. That means Habitat for Humanity is sponsoring a worldwide event that is trying to bring attention to housing poverty that exists. And they're doing a lot of great, great things here in Fitchburg. And I've been a part of seeing a lot of homes being built here by Fitchburg families that also include people that attend our Fitchburg Public Schools. So it's really great to see people come together and see their homeownership dreams being realized. So happy World Habitat Day. All right. Now, we're going to move on to public comments. Anybody in the audience brave enough to speak out? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the superintendent's report and some presentations.
Okay. The first thing I'd like to do is introduce you to our new secretary, school committee secretary, Deana Gagné. And welcome, Deana.
Thank you.
And we want to say thank you to Kim Lewis, was, I think, our secretary for about three years or so. And Kim has had to move on to another activity, but Bob and a couple of other people vetted and some possible folks for this job, and, and Deana rose to the top of the pack. So welcome, Deana.
Thank you.
And Patty has been coaching her and mentoring her on all of the responsibilities in handling the school committee. But it's really, you know, it's great to have her there. You know, Kim has been here and what she does really keeps good track. And at any time, we understand this is like your first time. So if at any point we're going too quickly, or you've missed something, raise your hand and we'll slow it down until you get the hang of it. So, but thank you and welcome. I, I received some emails from different people that, that talked about Principals Month. So I, I've been looking to have it affirmed that it actually is Principals Month, but I think, you know, they name months. I don't know whether it's a Hallmark event or whether it's an actual thing. But if it is Principals Month, I think we're going to spend some time thanking our principals because one of the things we talk about, especially at urban superintendents, when we look at our work, I think the group that's been the most hard-pressed in all of the changes in education have been our building principals. Because whether it's what's going on at the top in our area, or what's happening, you know, in the needs of the students and the staff, the folks that are in the middle trying to manage all of that are our principals. And later on, we're going to be welcoming a new principal here, but I wanted to share that with everybody. So are we ready to go with the video and all? Okay, great. So the first group that we're welcoming are our group of students who've been working with Jean Beckner, who you know here from Memorial. And Jean is going to come up and share with you the work that her students have been doing. And Jean, if you can introduce the students who are here. And this is going to be bringing you up to date on the WPI Camp Reach program that our students participated in. So, welcome.
Thank you. So, good evening to everybody. I'm Jean Beckner. I'm the ally coach.
You can come up to the microphone here.
And while everybody is still using the term ally coach, it seems that we all seem to understand what that refers to. And so this will be my fourth year in that role. And this is my student Ava Gagné, who is now an 8th grader, but she tells me that she's been part of the ally program since 2nd grade.
Oh, wow.
Which is really neat. And she's had a very fortunate experience to, to go to WPI two summers in a row, and she would like to share that with you this evening. So she has put together a presentation and will be doing most of the talking here tonight. So can you, do you need to stand when you're doing that to see? Probably you should stand so you can see what you're, you know what I mean? And if you need me to help you, you know, whoops. Here's your mouse. Here's your mouse. All right? You're welcome.
Hello. My name is Ava Renee Gagné. I'm an 8th grader from Memorial Middle School. I've been in advanced learners program since 2nd grade at Crocker all the way up until now. I've been fortunate enough to experience WPI STEM activities over the past few summers. In the spring of 2014, I entered my essay and waited to see if I had made it into Camp Reach, an overnight STEM camp for girls entering 7th grade. About a month later, an acceptance letter was sent to my mom's email. I was a lucky student who got a scholarship. The cost was over $1,000 and I got a full boat. I would be going to a college in which I would be with other girls learning about things that would interest me. When I went back to school the next day and told Ms. Beckner, a press release was sent out. The Sentinel Enterprise had put my story in the paper, and that's where it all began. On July 20th, 2014, my mom took me to WPI for the beginning of a two-weeks camp. UAC-Gompy, the mascot of WPI every day, sitting in front of the main building on our way to the classroom. The camp had begun. Lori Leschen, the president of WPI, came as we Skyped NASA workers in California. Lori still works on the NASA Rover project to this day. Our large project, which was given to us, split the 30 girls into three groups. Each group, in each group, 10 girls worked on real-life problems and came up with possible answers. My group's project was to create an irrigation system for the Worcester YWCA. Their problem was that it was too difficult to water their plants without under or over watering them and getting them onto the sidewalk. They wanted a convenience of automation. Our drip tape irrigation system was perfect. Camp Reach had ended, and I was sad to go. About a year after being accepted into Camp Reach, I was asked if I would like to go help install the system at the YWCA. And in the summer of 2015, we put our hard work into action. The Worcester YWCA received a grant from Harvard Pilgrim to purchase the kits. Six of the Camp Reach girls came to help install our design. One of our CITs came, and some of YWCA staff came out to help as well. It was a success. The drip tape was a slow drip, non-harmful solution. The timer was perfect. The automated system was running till this day. I want to, I want to thank you for inviting me to talk. I would like to show you a video that was mentioned in the Worcester news. They showed us this at the camp.
You're welcome. That's awkward.
That's all right. That was slow.
Been there. There we go.
And then the thing's not on. Great. You okay?
I thought she tested the sound.
I thought she did too.
Okay, that looks sound good.
Are working out facts and figures. As Anabotari explains, Camp Reach at WPI is showing these kids how to literally reach for the stars.
Girls from Camp Reach in Worcester talked to the group of women from NASA, learning about jobs that are out of this world.
And so one of the things that we're trying to do at Camp Reach is really get young women excited about STEM fields. Camp Reach is a camp for 7th grade girls. It has programs aimed at science, technology, engineering, and math. Tuesday, WPI president Lori Leschen, a former NASA scientist, met with the girls. She still works on the Mars Rover project.
Yeah, I've been involved with the rover since its inception a decade ago, and I'm still involved in operating it on the surface of Mars and doing science with the rover.
Leschen helped arrange a question-and-answer session through Skype with other members of the Mars Rover program.
Not a lot of people get to, you know, congratulate them.
It makes me feel that one day when I'm older, I can have that position. I can accomplish the things that she does, and it's, it's something to really look forward to.
Sue Song-Gref is the coordinator of pre-college programs at WPI. She says women are still a minority population in STEM fields. They've done a study and found that girls who attend the program are much more likely to enter an engineering field. About 18% of the girls who attend the program go into engineering.
We need every brain we can get to really help us solve those problems. And so the idea of getting more women into science and engineering is all about trying to make a great impact on our world, and we need this to happen in STEM.
Anabotari, Worcester news tonight.
How many kids applied for that?
Um, I'm not exactly sure, but I know that only 30 girls out of all the girls that enter make it in.
Wow. Congratulations.
And I'm sure they, I'm sure they don't all get full scholarships.
No.
Yeah. Yeah. Pretty exciting.
Any questions?
Can you do this again? Can you apply again?
Um, this is a STEM camp that you could only enter when you're going into 7th grade. So in other words, it's a one-chance opportunity, and if you miss out, you can't really go back.
And did you live on campus for those two weeks?
Mm-hmm. I slept in a dorm room, which we bunked up with another student.
That's great.
That's a good experience.
Can I ask, what do you hope to do after you finish high school?
Um, I'm not actually really sure. I mean, I don't even know. Like, maybe I'll pursue a STEM camp, you know, job, or maybe I'll go into an engineering job, or maybe I'll go in a different path. I mean, I don't really know as of right now.
What did you find when you went, Ava, that you, that you might have been exposed to, that you didn't know about, that you saw, you found were really interesting? What, what were either a subject or a process or collaboration or, you know, what, what was most surprising and interesting?
The most surprising thing for me when I went was that I didn't really realize how, you know, diverse that the engineering field is. It's not. But there's not a lot of girls that go into it. And when I went and I was walking around campus with my group, there was a lot of guys and there was only like 10% girls. And I was surprised when I saw that. It blew me away to realize that, you know, not many girls go into the STEM camp field or the STEM, the STEM engineering field.
Yeah, that's, that's, but you know what? You're the, you're the thin end of the wedge. You're the, you're the, you're the wave. So you've got to keep going and encourage the kids, the girls you know, to pursue it as well.
Great. Well, thank you so much for your presentation and for coming out here tonight. And, you know, nice little PowerPoint there you put together, and it was nice to see the video and see the other, see you in your element. Because you can talk about it, but it's not the same thing as just, you know, and you could hear the excitement in the background through the whole thing, so. And thanks to Jean and all of our teachers who do this kind of follow-up and looking for these opportunities and supporting our kids. And for me, who started that ally program, you know, eight years ago or seven years ago, to hear you, see you and say, "I've been doing this," it's like, boy, that's just what a, what an exciting thing to hear that, that something that we started so long ago and we've stuck with and we funded and we promoted is actually you're benefiting from it. And that's just great. Thank you.
That's terrific. Thank you for inviting us. Thank you very much.
Good, good. Now, the next person I'm going to introduce, Rich, Dick Vaughn, has probably been taking down your name and
Yeah.
And, and all of your information, as he sees, you know, when, when she gets to the high school, Ava's going to be on his list. But Dick is here to talk today about the boys and girls state and a couple of other things that are in the fire. And I don't know whether it's you, Dick, or you're going to have students speak with you or?
I'll, I'll say a few things.
Okay.
You want to say?
All right. So why don't you come up to the microphones?
You're all willing to answer questions, but they don't all want to speak.
Okay, good. We, we don't like shy people here.
Yeah, I was going to say, this is the twin team. We're being, this is the team, team approach.
I introduced them yesterday. Was that today? No, that was today I introduced you to.
Yeah.
I told Sabrina he was coming, and she said, "Really?"
You get to see Sabrina.
Initially, we're talking about boys state and girls state. Did you hand out the?
Yep.
This year, while he's handing it out, I'll give you a few of the statistics. There were 351 boys at boys state, about 382 girls at girls state. There are 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, and Fitchburg High had 20 boys at boys state, more than 5%. More than 10, almost, yeah, about 11% of the senior class was at boys state and girls state. Nobody else did that. The program grew in the past few years, and up until two years ago, it was totally funded by the state foundation. There was no local support at all. When the high school moved Dashby, it, something happened. I don't know what. I don't care. Got it to grow some. Two years ago, asked, they told me, if Fitchburg doesn't support some, we can't do it. Fitchburg jumped on board, sponsored two boys, two girls, absolutely no problem at all. Then this year and next year, we have the advantage of GearUp. I, I work 18 hours a week for GearUp, and they sponsored some students. We sent all the names in, and the state said, "Well, you're going to have to tell four of the boys and four of the girls that can't come because we don't have any money." I have no idea what happened. Looked around locally, and on the sheet you'll, that is in front of you, it says who has sponsored people. I think I took, I might have taken off the ones that the state were sponsoring and I just, but local support was found. Four teachers said, "I want this student to be able to go," and wrote a check for 300 bucks to make it happen. The ELL group got together and sponsored a couple. The city council sponsored a couple. Representative Deana Tally sponsored one. I mentioned that Soleil Schilling, who kind of gets left out because she's full-time dual enrollment at, at Fitchburg State, but she's the chair of the youth commission and contacted Mayor Wong's office, and they made that happen. So we probably, there were about four other girls who were qualified to go, and, but they had conflicts, they had other things that they had made commitments to, and one girl said, "That's just not what I like to do." And, you know, that's fine. Everything isn't for everybody. It's an outstanding program. It's the best deal on the planet. Need to make sure it continues to happen. You know, 20 and 12 is perhaps, you know, an overstatement, but 12 and 12 would be fine. And it has to become a local thing, and it has to happen. And there is support, if, if you ask. It's a great opportunity. I ask teachers to nominate people, and I tell them to nominate the student personally. Don't just say, "Go see Mr. Vaughn." Tell them, "I believe you should go for boys state." I have essays that were written by former students who are now, one, I think is a senior at BU, and his college essay was about Ms. Bolick saying, "I think you should go to boys state," and he had no idea what it was. And he went there, and Michael Richards is a no-brainer, you know. Michael went to boys state pre-med, came back from Boys Nation, economics, public service, and he's going to be running Harvard before he graduates. So, I'd like to have you say a couple things about the program, what you thought about it? And then you can ask some questions.
Boys state for me was like, it was very eye-opening. So you're, you get a personal experience with what, how your municipal government works. So when you arrive, you're, you're, it's split into cities and towns, mocking different how, cities and towns of Massachusetts. And each of them will have like a certain amount of population, certain economy. Everything's different. But by the end of the week, you have to have a mayor, you have to have your city council, you have, or your, you have to have a chairperson for all the committees. And it really opens you up to the municipal aspects of government. Because when you look at the newspaper, you see the president elections, you see the senator elections, but you don't really see the importance of your city council, your s, um, school committee, your mayor. It's like, these are the people that affect us the most, and yet we're so focused on the president. So I had the opportunity to be a judge, actually, so I scored one of the highest on the bar exams. So it's, there's, yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Just an aside.
But I do want to go into law, but it reinforced what I want to do for my career.
Can you just always state your name, just for not us here, but for people at home?
My name is Zachary Fred Haveranen. My nickname's Fred.
Anybody else have something they would like to say, or if you have questions for any of them? They're all capable of speaking, I know that.
Well, I'm curious to see what positions they end up in.
After we came back, both Mapadagliaka and Fred met with me and the Mr. Malone, he's a great guy at the Fitchburg Municipal Court, District Court?
District.
Whatever. And they did internships where they got to watch what's going on and talk to people. That's what people that want to become lawyers should do. It adds to their portfolio of work that will help them get places. And boys state and girls state, I, you know, I think there's a number of them, in fact, I know there's a number of them, are going to try to go back and be counselors. And Michael Richard will be a counselor this coming year. He took this year off so he could go do Harvard stuff in DC. And he was the guy sitting next to, every time there was somebody important, Colin Powell on his right, Michael Richard. There was another famous guy on his right, Michael Richard. He plays, he plays the room pretty well.
So, so you ended up as a judge at boys state. What were the rest of you? What did the rest of you end up doing?
I ran for secretary of state. And I won, but I, I was at the wrong caucus. And then
It was Massachusetts, Paul.
And then I ended up as a
Selectman?
Selectman.
Okay.
We won't even ask you about your email server.
Well, you didn't get some.
But it's, it's going to be important, especially with, you know, GearUp is here for two classes this year, one class next year, and then there's going to be a minimum of a two-year gap. It cannot let that happen. There should be no gap. It should be smooth.
Can I add something?
Yes.
Zach, why don't you slide your chair over and let another chair in there? Great.
For me, boys state, it was just a great experience. And even if you're not geared toward some role or aspect in government, it still provides you with numerous leadership opportunities, like cooperation, problem-solving. It seems really simple, but in hindsight, it seems simple, but it's actually a skill[1766.28]
There should be no gap, it should be smooth.
Can I add something?
Yes.
Zach, why don't you slide your chair over and let another chair in there. Great.
For me, Boys State, it was just a great experience. And even if you're not geared toward some role or aspect in government, it still provides you with numerous leadership opportunities, like cooperation, problem-solving. It seems really simple, but in hindsight, it seems simple, but it's actually a skill that's really hard because a lot of people are very narrow-minded. So it takes a lot to come together and discuss problems that you should resolve with other people.
Well, that's great insight.
Yeah.
You learned everything you need to learn.
Let's bottle that insight and sell it.
Juniors.
Yeah.
It's just juniors. That's the only ones that can go. We've also, we had several of them go, two boys were sponsored by American Legion Post 10, who had been sponsoring for years. And then all of a sudden, they kept calling and saying, "We want to sponsor," and, you know, I didn't want to tell you how we found each other, but they're back on board. They're talking about, they don't have an auxiliary which sponsors Girls State. They're still talking about sponsoring a couple of girls. They're also going to sponsor, there's a state trooper program for people that want to be either police or become a state trooper. We will get two people sponsored for that for this coming summer. And we're going to lock that in so that that doesn't go away.
I have a question. Did you have to deliver any speeches? You wrote an essay. Did you all practice giving speeches?
Yeah. Every time you ran, you usually gave like a quick speech, or if it was like a big one, you gave it like a bigger speech.
Yep.
If you were running for a city or a town position, you would do it just in your city or town? But if it was for a state position, which you could also hold, it was in front of all Boys State?
And it always shocks me that there are this many Pittsburgh kids there. I work at a school and we send two boys and we send two girls, and it's through the American Legion. They have to go to the Legion to give a speech to get the award, which is why I was asking about, I know at Boys State, they do a lot of public speaking, but I think it's also kind of a nice piece where you might have to do some public speaking before you go too, just to kind of practice. But, so I'm curious, knowing that most schools probably have two kids there, is Pittsburgh like dominant there? Does everybody say, "Another kid from Pittsburgh"?
It's, yeah, you definitely see, "Oh, you're from Pittsburgh, just like half the people here."
You go, "Yep, that's right."
So are you winning a lot of elections?
We run for a lot of elections.
Michael Richard went to Boys Nation 2012. Isaac Nelson went to Boys Nation 2014. We've got to come up with an auxiliary connection because that's very political, I've found out. And because we don't have an auxiliary connection to put pressure on, we haven't had anyone go to Girls Nation yet. Although we have had excellent, excellent candidates. But anybody that goes to Boys State or Girls State is a good candidate. We've had some great ones.
I have another thing to add.
Yes.
We talked about a lot about Boys State, but for Girls State, all the state positions were held by Pittsburgh.
Wow.
Students who attended.
They did a good job.
Can you give your name?
Oh, Kevin Ha.
The reason there's only this many here is a lot of them wanted to come, combination of sports, AP exams, other things that they're involved with, these are students who are busy. And I'm glad to have five of them show up. Most towns, that's five times as many as they have go.
Let's have names at least.
Guys would like to add, if you do, come on up to knock one of these guys out of the chair.
Here's your public speaking.
Augustine Sanchez is an excellent student. I worked with him on his PSA, from his PSAT to his SAT. He actually came and did some eight or nine hours of work and he went up by 310 points. I like to embarrass students. To a 1990.
Yeah, let's get everybody up here.
Getting them to do that is a good thing.
So they're juniors when they go. Does that mean you're juniors now or you're seniors now?
They're seniors now. It's the, they end up, they end up missing the last week of school this year because of the snow days and all that stuff. But quite often, it gets involved, you can only have good students do it because the good students don't really need to take finals because they already know what they're doing. And a few years ago, we had a student go because he thought it would be nice to miss the last week of school. And when he came back, he went, "Wow, I didn't realize," you know, "They work harder there than they would the last week of school, I will guarantee you that." Augustine, would you like to say something?
You know, I ran, I ran as a city council, city council member, and I won because it's not that competitive. It's a city position, so it was pretty easy to get. And, you know, it really teaches you to cooperate with a bunch of other people in your city council. So you actually have to like work together to solve problems. It's not just thinking of ideas yourself. And it was a pretty good experience.
They run a, on Thursday, they run a college fair. And this is a college fair where the people from the colleges go there saying, "These are Boys State and Girls State students. They're actually looking for them and talking to them." It's a great opportunity. It's not a lot of money, able to do it because of the change. The American Legion, I joined the American Legion just to legitimize the fact I got involved because I have no business doing this. But I am now an American Legion member, so I can say, "I'm supposed to do this." But it's a great organization. $300 for a full week. Almost everybody there does it because it's the right thing to do, which is a nice lead-in to the next thing, SLTP, Leadership Programs, which also is inexpensive because the people are there because it's the right thing to do.
So if you two guys can just introduce yourselves and just say a few things about your experience and then we'll move on to the SLTP.
I'm Kobe Namsali, and I had a wonderful experience. Like, I just liked meeting all the new people and becoming close with everyone in a short period of time. And I didn't run for anything big. I stayed small in my town, in the school committee. And we didn't have a lot of big projects, but it was fun.
I'm James Decoto. I actually showed up late because I had to take the ACTs, so I was kind of a step behind everybody. So I had to, kind of had to smooth, slither my way in. I didn't run for anything big. I'm kind of a shy guy, but I did, I won school superintendent for the city, so that was good. That was good.
Great.
Yeah, it was a very fun experience. And the friends that you make within your city, so you keep in touch, so it was a great experience.
So how partisan was it? Did you have a lot of people saying, "I'm a Republican, I'm a Democrat"? Did you feel like you were walking into sort of this
Yeah, a lot of the kids were very, like, into government.
Yes.
I would say. And for me, I was just like, oh, geez, I'm not like, I wasn't at that level yet. And it was, I kind of like stepped back. I was like, eh, yeah, yeah, like, there are a lot, there are
Yeah, there are a lot of future politicians.
When you arrive there, you're split into two different parties, the nationalists and the fedrous. So you abandon all the Democrat and Republican ideas. And it's really, it's not so much as real-life problems, just like more of working towards imaginary problems. So some of the ideas there were pretty out of there, but like, people didn't really actually support them, it was just more of a make it more fun
Yeah.
experience.
Where was it held again? You probably said it, I might have missed it.
Stonehill College. And this is the second year they've had boys and girls together at the same location. They used to do one at Westfield and one at Stonehill. But the American Legion, obviously, is an aging organization and they, a lot of economies to have them all at one place. And these are great kids, you know, you know, they were not co-ed dorms, I can tell you that. But, and, but everybody is there for a good reason. And it's, this is the first year they actually had some joint meetings. Last year, the first year, the girls were here and the boys were there. And some of the meetings were joint meetings, I believe, this year.
Didn't you, at least, you got to dance too, right?
As they should be.
There's a dance, I think.
One of the students, Tu Nguyen, flew back a week early from Vietnam so that she could get there. And they told her, "If you're not here by 8:00 on Sunday morning, you're too late." And she got there because she wanted to attend. And she's studying for something tonight.
Can I just say, for Fred or any of the other people who are interested in law, I teach at Pittsburgh State and I teach three law classes this semester. So if you want to make arrangements, I'd be more than happy to have you come and sit in on any or all of my classes so you could get a flavor of what goes on, you know, at the next level.
Yeah, I'd definitely be interested.
Okay.
So Dick, maybe you can help to just make that
Always, always looking to collaborate with Pittsburgh State. I think it's going to be the 20th, we have, I thought of Pittsburgh State with Elena Valcourt for their Channel 5 thing. Skylar Robinson will be interviewed for Channel 5 A+ Scholar on the 20th. He'll be on a little bit later than that. But collaborating with Pittsburgh State is definitely on the radar.
All right, well, thank you, guys. And next year, maybe all of you can be the superintendent at this. You know, congratulations on that. So we have another project that you want to talk about?
Yes, Sabrina, you've got the information to hand out on Student Leadership Training When the seniors were freshmen, I had a friend from my church, and lemurs, pardon the expression. It was now her friend, who had gone to one of their programs. And the mother said, you know, it changed the girl's life. She went from being very quiet, she ended up going to Fairfield and really getting involved. I said, "We, you know, we've got to give this a shot." Three students, they were supposed to be four, Sabrina was not feeling well, went to the re-energizer in November. The following year, we sent like 40 people to the re-energizer, we're sending people to their start program. All the programs are listed there, and I've listed what Gear Up is doing. And for this year, Gear Up has got juniors and seniors. Starting next summer, Gear Up only has next year's seniors. Don't want to see a decrease. We had 19 students do 21 residential leadership programs, and SLTP is easily a premier program. The guy's amazing. Sabrina can answer any questions on it. She went from not really wanting to go to not really wanting to come home. And it's, I have seen such a change in so many students from their programs. This, the OTS this coming weekend, we've got, there's a brand-new Lions Club, Pittsburgh has created a Leo Club. We had a couple of students come in from Murdock and they're getting the Kewanis, which is based out of Winchendon, to start a key club. So there's at least eight more leadership positions. They're going this coming Sunday. What the seminar does, it teaches them what a vice president should do and teaches them how to work together as a group. And because we sent so many, it's 25 bucks, you know, including our nice bag lunch. It's an unbelievable program. I've been talking about it and I just got ahold of some sophomores today. I sent an email to superintendent over the weekend because this stuff is coming up and we can really save some money if we do some stuff now. Next summer, these residential programs, you heard it say that what the girl went to with WPI was over $1,000. They're going up to $525. But if we register and pay now, or at least put a down payment now, it's only $380. Okay? And $380 for a four-night, five-day residential program in Nichols College, there's, you know, other than Boys State and Girls State, which is funded by the American Legion, there's nothing like that that exists at all. We've been able, we've sent, we sent, we're going to send two and then we send five, then we send seven to the start program for freshmen. And we're already looking for freshmen to get them involved. With the cadre of students that we've got at the high school now, talking to the other kids, more kids are coming up to me. A sophomore came up to me, you know, he's not supposed to talk to me because I'm a Gear Up and then we're juniors and seniors. But Drew Tebow was very interested in doing something. And he's going to look to see if he can go this weekend and get involved. We're trying to get some of the sophomore class leaders to go. Freshman class, might be better off waiting a little while till they get their feet on the ground. But all of the programs, the re-energizer is, explain what happens with the re-energizer quickly. You can do it better than I can.
Quickly, that's all. So we're split into groups. Anybody can come, so students are put in student groups and then advisors into advisor groups and parents into another group. And there's a theatrical performance by the staff and there's also these things called skill shops where we teach leadership skills through activities and debriefing the lesson. And it's a lot of fun. It's a lot of fun. And you learn a lot, so if anybody is interested in going, you can just talk to me.
It's a Saturday after Thanksgiving, so unless you're, you know, it's a perfect day not to go shopping. And they pick days at Nichols College when nobody else is there, so they get it for nothing. He always starts with, when you go there, he wants the real you there, he doesn't want the with-your-friends you, with-your-parents you, at-school you. He wants the real you there and you can say what you want and what you say will be accepted and you're expected to accept. He very clearly defines, "Respect isn't something you earn, it can only be given." If you give people respect and show respect, you should be able to expect respect, but if you don't get it, it's on them, not you. And the guy's charismatic, you know, and it's, I think the program is, I wish my kids had known about the program because I would have paid the money to have them go, period. And want to take the nucleus of the money we're talking about here and going to some parents. There are parents that could easily pay the 380 bucks, but they don't know about it. How, you know, who's looking for something next summer in October? So we're also going to have our second symposium, one-day symposium. First week in January, you can come and observe if you'd like. 120 students, 10 to 20 faculty members. They charge $15. All of the $15 goes to help keep the cost down for the summer. There is no one that works there, including her, that gets paid to be there. 17 people came here two years ago in January, spent the entire day, and we gave them lunch. They paid their own gas and they're doing it because it's the right thing to do. So guess what kind of attitudes they got? Really, really good.
So Dick, everybody has this sheet of paper. Can you look at the back? So there are a lot of numbers on the back of this. But what specific number are we looking at?
You know, I put together some figures based on what we did last year and just moved it into this year. Last year, Gear Up's portion was a lot higher because they had two full classes all the way through, including the summer. To not lose anything and to offer the same thing to the students the coming year, these are the, kind of the figures we're looking at, okay?
Which, are there a lot of figures here? What's the bottom line?
SLTP participation beyond Gear Up. 5220 would make it so that the class of 2020, 19, and 18 could participate, okay? Because 16 and 17 are Gear Up, 18, 19, and 20 are not.
So we're filling in the gap.
Yes, yes. Last year, the gap was filled in nicely, but last year, it was, it was smaller.
And what's the other number, the six, two, five?
Oh, that's the pay me now or pay me later. You know, if you approve now, if I can send in the nine LTCs, I don't even need that much money right now. I think I can, I don't have that figure memorized. I can give them like 120 bucks towards the 380 and they'll, and they'll hold the position.
And what's the deadline for that?
Technically, it's 10/16 as it states there, but Jim and I get along pretty well. Jim sees this as a real opportunity to see what can happen when a town really gets involved. I will also tell you, originally, only one, maybe two I will also tell you, originally, only one, maybe two person gets to go to the start program. I talked to him at a five the first year and then five the next year and then seven. No, it was five and then seven. And he's so afraid that if seven kids go, seven freshmen go from the same town, that they're going to hang around with each other and it's going to be a problem, not the kids from Pittsburgh.
Right, right.
And he's now found out it's not a problem and he welcomes. During the summer, he only wants maybe three or four kids per week. I didn't bring that document, but the, you know, they only run the four, the four weeks that start in July. And there's an LTC, individual leadership, ALC, group leadership. And he only wants maybe one or two in each so that they don't hang around together. We had four, five in each group to get the numbers that we got. Two of the parents paid for a second week on their own. And, you know, as this goes around and the students that have been doing it are going to help plan and run the program in January. The last one, they brought in 17 people. This time, they should probably only have to bring in seven, eight, or nine because, you know, we have, Sabrina is on staff. Yeah. When, when, when they get to be seniors, they can't, you know, they're really busy. But Jill Wallens, Gabby Upson, Sophia Kangalvis.
Lizzie Moison.
Are on and who?
Lizzie Moison used to be on staff.
And Lizzie Moison was, you know. It's not a surprise to me that these two were selected because they both did the SLTP program and they were ready as, as juniors to take a position that was normally seniors. And I'm highly in favor of the spring, fall thing because second must be senior year. They have much too much to do, they shouldn't be coming to these meetings.
All right, so what we will do is, you've now done a presentation. We'll bring this to the resource subcommittee. And then could you contact them and say the earliest we'd be able to finalize it would be the 20th, October 20th?
Not, not, not a problem at all.
All right, that'd be great.
Consider that not a, you know.
Okay.
Jim, Jim and I, we, we got a plan.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Thank you guys, really appreciate it. Appreciate you taking the time out from whatever else you, you could have done tonight, so. But great presentation.
Okay. Who has at least one AP class? Includes you. Includes you.
Yeah, I have lots of AP classes.
Who's got at least two? Who's got at least three? Who's got at least four? Who's got five? Who's got six? Who's got seven?
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much.
AP apparently means all people.
Good job.
Email me, I answer questions. Thank you, sir. Now go study some.
So I have the opportunity tonight to bring to you the new principal of Goodrich Academy. I'd like to invite Ray to come up. Ray Doer, I sent you his resume and information on Ray. As you know, this has been an ongoing process for over a month. We have had two searches, lots of candidates, and the last search really gave us a strong pool of candidates with administrative experience. Ray comes to us with a degree from Villanova University.
I transferred from Villanova to Holy Cross.
To Holy Cross. Well, I wanted to get the Villanova in there too.
I know you did.
So started with the Villanova. And then, my apologies, Holy Cross Competition of Assumption College where I went to school. Yes. So Villanova University, College of the Holy Cross, then Masters of Arts at Adelphi University and Worcester State University, we will not hold that against you. But as you can see, really great variety of experience, variety of experience in terms of background and education and a total of 13 years of experience as a high school principal, high school principal in Norton Public Schools, and then principal at Quabbin Regional High School. So I've had numerous conversations with Ray already. I've met with Ray and Mike and we had kind of a get-together talking about the school and the transition. And Ray started, today was his first day at Goodrich, and for this week, he will be there side by side with Mike. You know, as I said during the questioning, during the searches, you know, if you're an elementary school principal, every elementary school's somewhat different, but you kind of go into it and there's things that are similar from one elementary to school to the next. There's really no way to prepare for Goodrich Academy because it's so different, what you have to do, the way it runs, the way it works. And then Friday, I think it was, right, that I went over to Goodrich with Mike and met with the whole staff, gave me an opportunity to thank Mike, you know, again, not only from me, but from all of us for the work that he's done there in the foundation. And I said to the staff and to Ray, you know, I've been really lucky. My two high schools, I've been able to hire a principal and say, it's not broken. You don't have to come in and fix some horrible mess. You're coming into a really great place with a good foundation, good staff, good, good outcomes, and you can build on that. So we spent a good amount of time with the staff, talking, Mike talking with them, and then you stayed and did some look around. This week is really for Mike and the staff to introduce him to the student body there, which as you know is, is possible because we're only talking about 180 kids. And then next week, we will cut him loose, you know, and he is on his own at, at Goodrich Academy. So you can talk a little bit about yourself, talk about your initial experiences there, and then be open to questions from the school committee.
Okay, I've been doing a lot of that with the interview process and then meeting people this week. First, I'd like to thank you that the whole process has been fantastic. I have felt welcomed at Pittsburgh from the first interview on. And last Friday, I got to meet this, I got to spend time with the staff and that was, that was really interesting and good. They were a little nervous when I left because I don't necessarily, I'm not necessarily easy read, so they're like, I hope we didn't scare them away and everything. So they were pretty happy when I showed up today and, you know, we spent some time with them. And we were able to meet with all three waves of students today and that was really fantastic. The kids were great, they asked some really good questions. The staff learned a lot about, more about me from their questions than they ever would have been asking themselves. So that was kind of nice because kids, kids want to know things and, and so I was able to share a lot. And, you know, it's, it's been very, very positive. I like the programs. One of the things that I shared with the kids that Mr. Ravenell was expressed to me is, don't break it. And, you know, that's what they wanted to hear is, I'm not there to, to make it into, you know, Goodrich Prep or anything like that. We're there to make sure that they have the best possible high school experience, that they get their diploma and that it's something that they remember and are very proud of. And, you know, that's something that's really important to me. The most, the most significant diplomas that I've given out as an administrator have been to the kids who struggled. You know, the kids who spend five or six years in high school, the kids who've had kids and, or, or otherwise dropped out and then come back because they know the value of it. They know what it is like to persevere and to struggle and they still make it. And they're, you know, the pride that they have and that their parents have is just so huge and so meaningful. And a lot of kids who find it easier to, to get through high school, they don't really appreciate that until they have struggled. And, you know, these are, these are kids who have some really strong character by the, by the time that they're done. So it's, 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 it's very nice. You know, I like the building, it's, it's very easy to get around in. I'm sure most of you guys have been there. And it was a little cold today, but we're working on that. You know, it was, it's just been very positive. In terms of my past, I guess Mr. Ravenell and I were both at Mission, he was at Mission High School while I was at Cathedral High School in Boston. And so that's, we've had a connection as far, as far as that goes. I started out in urban education at Cathedral. I loved it and it was probably, up until now at least, probably the most meaningful job that I've had was working there. I traveled to Academia Cotopaxi in Quito, Ecuador. I needed a change in, in my life, I went there. And the best part about that is, the first day that I went in to visit the superintendent, the woman who was going to become my wife was coming out of there and I was going in. She mentioned to some of her friends, she thought that this gringo was cute. And they spent about three weeks trying to get us together. Three months later, we were engaged. Nine months later, we were married and we've had a really good relationship since then. You don't have to travel to find a wife, but it worked out for me. And, you know, she's, she's originally from Honduras and her mother is Ecuadorian. And I'm still struggling with my Spanish, but I'm going to get there. I promised a lot of the kids I will get through my Rosetta Stone and be able to have conversations with you this year. And they're, they're going to help me out with that. I have two, two children, my daughter's a sophomore in high school and she does field hockey, she does basketball, and she does drama. My son is in seventh grade and he plays baseball and football and they're a handful. We live in Worcester. And my wife is principal of the Lincoln Street School in Worcester, so she's also an urban educator, she loves it. We share stories all the time. Hers are much more engaging than mine because the elementary schools tend to be a little bit more gregarious. And, you know, I love education, I love working with kids. And, you know, one of the things that I've talked with the kids about today is, when, a year after you graduate, I want you to come back and say, how come you weren't doing that when we were, when, when we were there? And then I'll know that we're succeeding, we're moving in the right direction. And, you know, Mike and his staff have done a fantastic job of, of really having a great foundation for the kids. Mike's been fantastic, working with him the last, the last several hours today. It seems like more. And, you know, he really wants to make sure that I know what I need to know before he leaves. And, you know, so that's, I, I really appreciate his passion for the school and the staff's passion for the school too, so I feel really, really positive.
It was interesting going around the room because if you know that, that the basement there, they have that dining room table basically where they gather.
It's a nice table.
And, and we were talking about, like, people were introducing themselves and it was like 17 years, 16 years, 12 years. And I, and I sat there going, wow, I didn't realize that so many of these staff members had been here for so long in this role. And I think Mike was 18 years in that role. I think that's what he said.
No, I think Brad was 18.
Brad was 18, yeah.
He's like the historian, the historian. And then Mike's just 12.
Yeah, just 12, right, right. So if you have any questions or feedback for Ray?
Yep, well, first, do you know if Principal Month is a real holiday?
I believe that you're supposed to give the principal a car and a key to the city, but that's just a rumor.
I heard of Principal Day, I've never heard of Principal Month.
Well, you know, sometimes you need to spread it out a little bit. That's all right with me. I've never heard of such a thing, so.
So what, what attracted you to apply to Goodrich?
It's got a very good reputation and I actually have a cousin who is special education, is in special education department here in, in Pittsburgh. And I called him about it and he just raved about the school and its programs. I said, I'm going to apply then. And, you know, nothing, nothing has dissuaded me of that. And, you know, I think people don't really understand what alternative education is, you know, it's not where you just throw everybody who's been bad or naughty or anything like that because some kids just can't learn in the traditional box. And we need to, this is, at least Pittsburgh has made the commitment to say, we don't have just one box, we have a lot of different ways for, for students to succeed. And I think that that's, that's what really draws me because the other schools I've been at, we've had to sort of force things in and, and make it work. And for some kids, that's just, it just doesn't, it doesn't make sense to them. And this, this school works for those students who are there. And, you know, they're vested in it and they know that it's time to be serious and it's really great that, that they are and they have that chance here.
So I know that no one wants you to break the school, but any ideas to enhance the school?
Well, I was talking a lot with the students today about establishing a really strong, legitimate student council and there's a lot of interest in that. And we get to see, how do we make that work with the different waves? And I think I can. I want to work on some leadership and team building programs with them in different hours. I've had a lot of training with that through the YMCA's. And the National Guard actually has done a lot with me at my past schools and I want to get, I want to also get involved with them because they have a, they have a great facility down at Camp Edwards on the Cape. And they have a Leadership Reaction Course, it's a blast. And they also have an obstacle course, which is also very interesting. One, you have to learn to work with others and one, you really learn about your own self and your own fears. And, and I think that's something that, that our kids need is to feel that sense of accomplishment, you know, because especially in Norton, I would take kids, half the kids would be from my leadership group and half would be at-risk students. And we'd mix them. And I would ask the National Guardsmen who were watching and laughing while the kids were struggling and say, can you tell me which kids are, are at risk? And they wouldn't be able to do it because outside of the academic environment, these kids were able to problem solve, to, to find out, and, and that's, that's excellent. And I think I want to have kids learning that problem solving. I want to see what other activities and stuff we can bring in there so that they can, you know, you know, they can have that experience with high school that, that they really want. You know, I always tell kids, you're not going to go to a five-year reunion and say, remember that geometry quiz in 10th grade? Wasn't, wasn't number seven awesome? You're not going to, you're not going to do that. Those are important, but there's other value added that you really need to have. Well, you know, and there's nothing wrong with that.
Well, there really is.
I thought number six was way better. But, you know, it's, it's a matter of, you know, looking at that. I want to see, how can we bring in other types of assessments so the kids can, can really work on problem solving and, and, and project-based outcomes? I want to see maybe about some, incorporating some sort of a senior project where, where the kids are able to, to take the learning expectations and, and do things with them. We brought those in both at Norton and at Quabbin and they were really, really cool things. And, you know, not, not everyone's going to build a car or a spaceship, but they're going to do something that's theirs and they're going to remember it. And they are going to be able to say, yeah, I really did learn this stuff. And, and so those are things that I want, that I'll probably be bringing to you and hopefully you say yes. And, you know, just, just so that every kid has the opportunity to really show what they know and, and not just show what they know on a, on a pen and paper test.
I just want to, I just want to say that I went to Goodrich Street School from kindergarten through fifth grade. And I still live in the neighborhood, so welcome to our neighborhood.
I'll buy any time, yeah, thank you.
Great.
Are you ready for this kind of a different schedule at Goodrich?
Well, my family and I, we had the discussion over the weekend and that was my, that was a big thing is, okay, because we always have dinner together. So now we're doing, we started this morning breakfast together. And so got up, we, we had French toast and sausage and stuff and tomorrow's going to be pancakes. And, you know, it's just, just so we are spending that time together. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of what happens in the lives of kids happens on weekends. I know I get to coach my sons baseball and football and stuff like that. You know, and as much as possible, when, if my daughter's playing on a Friday night, it looks like I'll be able to break free and be there. And so, you know, and, and it's just, it's just something different. And, you know, when I was at Norton, that was an hour plus each way. So anytime there was any type of, of evening activity, I was, I was gone because 495 is fun, but it's not that much fun. And so, you know, there are a lot of nights away. And this way, I'm half an hour and, you know, I can drive my kids to school, I can, we can have breakfast together. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a real plus. And so I'm, they're, they're, they're getting used to it. My daughter really likes to hang out in her bedroom until it's time to go to school, so it was hard to draw her out. But the French toast helped and, and so it's, it's, you know, it's going to work for us. As long as you, as long as you have your family time, it doesn't matter what time that is.
So it sounds like we need to find you a maple syrup connection.
Actually, I made a connection with, with one of the sugar houses in Hardwick last year because we, we had an exchange program with the school in the Netherlands and we brought maple syrup as a gift when we went there. And so, yeah, yeah, I can get maple syrup there.
Well, thank you, Ray, and you'll be coming back, you know, for different presentations. And just for the record, Paula did Google, National Principal Month is October.
A whole month?
You don't have to spend a lot.
There's nothing here about a car.
It's the fine print.
Yeah, it's the fine print.
Yeah.
So National Principals Month, so we will be following up with that.
Also, I did notice that you're voting later on the June 3rd graduation for the high school. Can you include June 2nd?
Yeah, no, that, that's included in the new calendar. Yeah, you're always the night before.
All right.
And you're the, you're the dress rehearsal, so. No pressure. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, Washington DC, grade eight field trip. Groundhog Day. Seems we just were seeing slides and pictures of you coming back and here we are approving you to go. So tell us about this trip.
I have two trips actually that I want to talk about.
Okay, yeah, the AMC, the White Mountain Field Trip, that's yours too?
Let's talk about grade, grade eight. Again, we want to do the trip to Washington. Good evening, everybody. I said to the parents, I think this is my 23rd trip with the kids, or 20th trip, I can't even remember now. trip, I can't even remember now. But I have a really great team that will be going. Bob Pack from, sorry, McKay. Sean Walker from here from Memorial. And Mike from Long Joe is taking over a good lion's share of the kind of day-to-day stuff that we'll be doing. You can see in the handout, we're going to be taking a look at government. I was kind of excited to hear about Boys State. And, you know, the kids get to preview a lot of that stuff while we're down in Washington. And we do a lot of that kind of talk with the tour guides. Like I tell the kids and the parents, this is a rigorous walking trip, it's a taste of Washington. We try to do as much as we can in the time that we're down there. And I think the kids have more fun on the bus. If I drove around for eight hours on a bus, they would have just as much fun. But as you can see from the itinerary, it's all the same stuff. We're going to be doing all the monuments again and hitting the Holocaust Museum. We're just waiting to see if we get tickets for everybody. We're such a big group, it's tough to get that many tickets, but they always come through for us. Which the teachers do a great job preparing the students. And they do a lot of work around that with the Common Core, some of the books that the kids are reading. So that's a huge help. We get to go to all the monuments, we get to FDR, we do an illuminated tour at night. Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial and JFK, I'm sorry, Jefferson and FDR. And then we have a dance that night at this really nice swanky place. It's kind of funny coming with all the kids and they're kind of dressed casually and it's like a wedding venue. They have a great time, you know, the food's really good there. And then on the last day, we're going to be actually going, leaving early and going up to Baltimore and taking in an Orioles game again. And then we stay at a different hotel. So it's kind of, that was a transition for us last year. We had a few bumps, but we worked through them. But the kids got up, they were troopers, we had a great time. Kids loved Camden Yards, it's a great, great place to take kids. The ushers are fabulous there and they took really good care of all of us. And then we head back on Wednesday and we're back, last year we get back at 7:30. So we try to get back by 8:30 Wednesday night. And we're starting fundraising and we're looking for donations and asking all sorts of people to help out the kids.
I was surprised last year.
It was 6:30.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah. Last year we went with a cheaper bus company and we ran into all sorts of problems with the bus company. It broke down, one of the buses broke down on us. And they were a big company, they ran up and down the eastern seaboard. But Wilson Tours does the best. We've had such good luck with them, the two, they got us where we needed to go, the drivers worked together. So for me, it was worth the extra money to pay Wilson. The other company was a lot cheaper, but it wasn't worth it. It was a lot of extra headaches that made my, you know, job a lot more difficult. So, yeah, so it did go up a little bit more.
Okay, White Mountain Trip?
Yeah. The AMC trip, we, we used to do this trip a long time ago at BF Brown. And Craig Shalaf, our principal, really, really wanted to get this trip resurrected. And we had some younger teacher last year that really wanted to do it, two years ago, excuse me. And the kids went up, they had a great time, they did three days. And the teachers came back and said, oh, that's not enough time, we need to do four. So they, we booked it with the AMC folks and the teachers are now working with the kids to get that up and running. They do some field exploration, they do some hiking. The kids go up right after Memorial Day weekend, so there's still snow in the mountains, which the kids are still always like, oh my God, it's May and there's snow. They do a ton of science stuff. Washington is my baby, but this would be my other trip I'd love to go on. But Mr. Shalaf will be going with the kids, with the teacher chaperones. And we had forty-five kids go last year on this trip. And we're hoping to get more this year. I found a bus company that will take them up. We did do a yellow bus the last two years and I thought it was kind of cruel and unusual punishment for my staff to have to go up in a yellow bus. So I've been trying to find a cheaper coach bus. And I think I found a guy in New Hampshire, just have to get him to commit. So it's really a great experience for the kids. And the AMC folks, the Appalachian Mountain Trail folks, they do an unbelievable job with the kids. And they spend a lion's share of the time with the children during the day. They do onsite fieldwork. And at night, the teachers do the activities with the kids. And they're pretty busy from the time they get up to the time they go to bed. And for most of our kids, it's the first time they step foot onto the whites and go hiking. And, you know, it's a great experience for them.
Is there fundraising for this as well?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, because it's not on there.
Yeah, they're working on it. I have, Becky Colo is one of my teachers, she's now our ally coach, but she's decided to keep up with it. And she's taking over some more of that fundraising stuff. So we want to make sure we can get as many kids. My goal would be to get fifty-five kids to go to fill a bus. Which would be really good.
Jen, could I just say, thanks for doing all this work to organize these trips? As I have an eighth grader who's going to go this year, and I can't think of anybody who I'd feel better about running a trip that she's on. So thanks.
Thank you.
Because I watched you work the room of that parent meeting and thought, that's a lot of energy. So thank you for twenty-something years of doing that.
Yeah.
And for AMC.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
All right, see you next year.
Oh, I'll be back. In May, or April.
Next year, just say ditto. You know, I mean, really. Okay, next thing on the agenda, Jeremy was here last time to present on the calendar change and the graduation dates. Jeremy, actually, just so you know, he's, every, you know, NEASC asks for people to volunteer to go and evaluate other schools. And Jeremy is doing Boston Latin. So the way it works is you're there for four days and do an intensive evaluation of the school. And they start on Sunday and they go till Thursday. So that's what he's doing. And again, we're going to be starting up our process next year for a NEASC review the following year. So it's not only, you know, being there and providing staff for the Boston Latin visit, but it's also getting a really nice insight of what's going on, what are they looking for, things like that. So if it takes him more than an hour to get back to you on anything, it would be because he's there. Because normally that would be even quicker turnaround. There's a donation there for Long Joe. You've heard me talk about all of the furniture that we received from the, from Pittsburgh State University. We've assigned it a rough cost. And that cost is over $16,000 if we were to purchase this used furniture. And that is all mostly at Long Joe. Then there's a donation from Tina Kroll, Gently Used New School Supplies. Grant, new grants coming forward for submission. Worcester County Food Bank for $75,000. TD Bank Charitable Foundation for $60,000. Quality enhancements and after-school, out-of-school time, $31,000. Target Grant, $900. And the Yellow School Bus Grant for $200. For accepting grants, accepting the Cal Grant, Center for Applied Linguistics for consulting services, is this correct? But $231,000?
Yeah, I can explain that.
Yeah, yeah, so why don't you talk to that one?
So we have an opportunity to partner with Center for Applied Linguistics. They've submitted a ginormous national grant. And I've been a participant on a couple of phone conferences with them, with Bonnie Beer C. Mac. And we're working on the details. It's a multi-year grant networking with, basically, I think, 195 school districts in northern New York State and Pittsburgh. So we're the equivalent of almost 200 school districts in New York State. To develop an online virtual community of practitioners in regular ed around best practices for teaching students who speak English as a second language. So the Center for Applied Linguistics folks are internationally known as experts. We'll have colleagues in northern New York State and then colleagues, they're looking at fifteen, ten to fifteen teachers every year for two years. I think it's ten teachers with a stipend, it could be a little higher. And then participate in online coursework, online professional learning communities, a couple of face-to-face meetings after school hours, and then an overnight, two-day or weekend symposium sometime at the end of each year where folks from all of the various partnership groups would get together. For the past five years, Gene Beckner is gone now, but we've participated in something like this with Tufts, called the Pointe Carré Institute. And it was teachers of mathematics or science STEM areas. And it was to develop, using the Tufts faculty, an online virtual professional learning community. And we've had close to a dozen to fifteen teachers a year from the middle schools and the high school do this for the past five, to the point where Gene Beckner has now been asked by Tufts to be an adjunct faculty member in the Pointe Carré Institute as they roll this out for the next series of professionals. And it's international. A couple of the folks from Tufts were actually teaching in France. So it was all through online help desks and Skype and, I mean, very exciting use of technology. People videotape their classes, plan collaborative lessons. So we're anticipating that kind of a structure with the Center for Applied Linguistics. So we don't get the grant, but our staff members get the benefit of the funds through stipends and consultation work.
And you can see that the stipend portion of this would be $34,000. And that's why I was looking at the other big number and thought, oh, okay, that's a lot of money. And then you've got the Pittsburgh State University Dual Enrollment Partnership Grant. That would be for $19,250. Mass Autobahn, $4,000. And USA Football Grant for $1,000. And then if, Bob, if you could bring people up to date on the net school spending agreement and the school choice funds?
Sure. Every year, the city and the school department should be updating the agreement in regards to what indirect charges are charged, the school department by the city. And what you have before you tonight is a summary of the charges for this fiscal year. And basically, there are only a couple of minor changes. One is really the increase in the school resource officers, two of them. And really, and then some wording in regards to the retirement allocation, how that's calculated. So other than that, this agreement is very similar to last year.
And then school choice?
And then school choice, Thursday night's Resource Committee meeting, we went over three of the four items that are on the agenda. We didn't get the fourth one included on the agenda. But first, we have $1,500 for musical instruments, principally guitars, keyboards, and some peripherals to meet student demand at Pittsburgh High School. Then we have another request from Eileen Spinney for $10,000 to invest in grade one through eight science materials and supplies. At the Resources Committee meeting, members, committee members asked for a detailed itemization of that and I distributed that to the members. I believe I distributed it to all school committee members prior to this meeting. Third is the windscreen that goes around Amiot Field located on River Street in Pittsburgh. That's the field, athletic field where in the fall, the high school for fall team practices. And in the spring, I think they still throw the javelin over there. And lastly, one item that I didn't get on the list for last Thursday night was another request for investing technology, computers and peripherals at Goodrich Academy for $13,904.
So one of the things that happened there was I met with all of the staff from Goodrich Academy during the days before school started. And talked to them about the change and the change in leadership and things that are going on. And I also took the chance to talk to them and say, how's it going? What are your thoughts for, you know, the coming year and all of that? And one of the areas that they said was, they didn't have a lot of stationary technology. So a lot of our classes now, I think all the regular ed classes here, for example, have the projector and the screen and everything else. And they were doing a little bit of catch-as-catch-can. They had some of it, but it wasn't standardized. So, you know, I asked them, I said, well, you know, we keep repeating over and over again that people need the resource, the instruments, the technology, everything to teach and do their jobs. So we, I had Eileen do an assessment of Goodrich. And I said, what would it take to be offering the same kind of technology support at Goodrich as we have at the high school, we have here at our middle school? And that's what this represents, would be bringing them right up to speed so that every one of their classrooms has that, has the same technology that we have here for the teacher, for teaching, as opposed to, you know, Chromebook card or a lab or anything like that. So that's the background for this.
Great.
So 605, 606, and 607 are all school choice funds?
Yes.
605 through 608.
Right, those say it. So, but the other two didn't specifically say, so I just wanted...
Yes, those are all school choice, yes.
Okay.
It should be.
Actually, that's a good point, I think.
We usually...
They usually say school choice.
School choice funds.
The address Brad in the final meeting minutes.
Science materials and supplies needs to say school choice.
I think that was just probably a typo or something.
Yeah.
School choice.
Because when, I always put invest, it's the equal school choices. Yeah.
Right.
So, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any uncertainty.
Nope. Good catch.
Public testimony, seeing none, we're going to move on to the action items. The first would be the trip to Washington DC.
Motion.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Then the trip to White Mountain.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. This is the changing of the graduation date to June 3rd.
Motion.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. 602 is a donation from Pittsburgh State.
Motion.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions potentially?
Actually, that's a good question whether, do they have to abstain?
I don't know, I mean, it's, because we work at Pittsburgh State, but we're not benefiting financially.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We're not doing, yeah.
Yeah, we're giving stuff away.
Okay.
I'll be, I'll keep my motion.
All right, so 603 is a donation from Tina Kroll.
Motion.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. 604, this is the net school spending agreement.
Make a motion.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. 605, musical instruments, school choice.
Motion.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. 606, science materials.
Motion.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.